Barbara Williamson, Paula Fields.
Laura Left.
Barbara Left. Paula Fields, Annette Henry, Doris Atta.
Good evening. I have a little song, so I'm gonna try, so because my daughter is in a hospital and... As the ladies say, I think she heard that. I'm from West Africa Ghana. Been here for so many years. We do not treat our old folks as they treat in the US. I'm raising especially child who has artistic. I've been harassed by my landlord, Yirete Mwena. I live at 54 North 10th St. I've been living there for over 20 years. I work so hard. Everywhere I take my artistic child, I'm not approve of anything because I make too much money. What I'm about to say is that I want the rent freeze. I cannot act for any longer. Because I'm raising my artistic child. Everywhere I go, I don't have the support from nowhere. So during the winter, my daughter gets very cold and my artistic child will look at my face and say, "Mommy, I am freezing." I've been in and out of the hospital. Only yesterday, I was in Montefiore Hospital with my daughter. I just want to plead with the board. Please, please. As the ladies said, there are more countries we do not treat somebody who is sick like the way American people treat. I am so shocked because I came to this country to better my life, but to go back home with my artistic child, food was sometimes when I cook. I don't have to put gravy on the childhood. She asked me and said, "Mommy, what happened to the gravy? Why? Why? All the money I make goes towards rent." Because I don't wanna be armoniously with my artistic child. So I'm pleading with you guys, please, please, do not put more increase for the rent. Living the way it is so that we, that we as single parents can afford. I don't wanna be a homeless. I work so hard to put food on my artistic child, but bear in mind, because I believe my love is going to take care of me and my child. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ivan Capers, Christiana Conera.
Ivan left and Christiana are in testimony.
Okay. Eleanor Smith. Stand around. And then Maria Cops and Laura Veldez.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Graham. I'm from Lafayette Boys and Housing. Been there since 1980. And I can't, I forgot how many rent increases we've had because we had so many current landlords. Now, we want a rent freeze, but now we're facing a lot of NCI charges. If we get the rent freeze, we still have those NCI charges. They do the lobby down, they do the outside, and we ask, and carpet. We didn't ask for any carpet. Now, what gets me is that I see so many storage houses going around the neighborhood. So many buildings for furniture. I really believe that in my heart. Every time I look, I see a storage house. And it doesn't make sense. So I'm asking for a rent freeze. I'm asking that they open up the landlords' books.
Yes.
Go back.
Yes.
Because it's not fair. Now, recently, we had a refrigerator put in, a small one, my height. It must have cost $50 for it. I can't even put my carrots or fruit in. It's so small. So I went to the manager, I said to him, "Can you get, I cannot buy a refrigerator." He says, "No, I will increase your rent." Now, you're gonna raise my rent, but yet, I cannot buy a refrigerator on my own. So I'm just saying, especially with the elderly, I mean, they have such a rough times. I'm asking that you hear us. In closing, I want to say this. My husband went for a job to work for the line. The test they gave him, they rifled him. I said, "Why did they rifle you?" He said, "Because I had to see, know how it feels to be blind." So when you're gonna fight for us, ask them to take the rifles off and see what we're going through. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Quickly, I'd just like to say, with the room was full, we had a very good representation of the various stages in life. We had seniors, the testimonies for them. We had the disabled, testimonies for them. We had new immigrants coming in, their struggles with getting extra funds to pay rent, and even those in the shelters. I'd just like to support the fight for the city worker a little more. It was mentioned, but I'd like to say that at least, at least half, if not more, than the room when it was full, I'm sure were civil servants and city workers.
Yes.
I moved into Lafayette Boys and Apartments, and I've been there 35 years. I moved in when I was 22 years old. And I started my job, my, the job I had when I moved there was at the New York City Police Department. From there, I moved to social services because of my love for children, and I retired from there. 35 years. And now, I'm about to be priced out of my apartment. City workers, council workers, transit workers, that are not in management positions and administrative positions, which is the majority of the jobs, live in houses like Lafayette Boys and, us Boys in the States, and the other homes. Isn't fair that a city like New York City, whether it be Bronx, Manhattan, Brooklyn, or Queens, take their civil servants that have dedicated so many years into the city and allow landlords, private landlords, who as one that was here, "Oh, I have 25 buildings." He's not struggling. He's not struggling. He may complain, but he's not struggling. City workers that are laid off numerous times during their careers, if they do reach pension, I'm grateful to have reached it, but why should I have to dedicate all that time to the city? And then work about being pushed out of my apartment? So please, take that back to the board, to the mayor's office, and everybody else. You decide your final decision. And without the city workers, where would we be? Thank you.
David Cops, Laura Veldez.
Laura Veldez.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cops, I'm sorry. It's underground. Thank you, Ms. Cops. Laura Veldez.
Laura Left.
Mia Maubilé.
Naima.
Naima. Janay Day. Evelyn Torres.
Evelyn.
Hello. I'm Evelyn Torres, and I live at 12 Curtis Taylor Avenue. I've been there 35 years, since 1979. This building has eight units. Since they did the NCI in the building, the building happens to empty out. If there's five people there that I know from vans, it's a lot. Because actually, everybody moved out because of the NCI increase. Right now, I'm still fighting with DHCR. Four years now, they haven't answered. I just put in petition two months ago. They still haven't answered the one from four years ago. I'm still waiting for an answer. They came to my house, DHCR, and saw that the kitchen wasn't done. Still hasn't been done, and they still get that increase. Right, and no answer from DHCR. I would like to get that petition answered. It has not been answered. And mainly, everything that everybody said in here is the same issue as I have. They fix these buildings, but they don't do the job. They ask for money, but they don't do the job. My job wasn't done. I'm still fighting it. I have a petition out there and hasn't been answered. That's all I can say right now.
Rent freeze.
Congratulations.
Lucy Arroyo, Linda Seward, Jacqueline Allen.
Good evening. My name is Linda Nakasai, and I'm an immigrant from the Bronx. And I've been living there, approximately 20, not many years. I was born in the Bronx, in the same area. Just want you to know, even though some of the statistics have been set, I would like to repeat it. In 2013, almost a quarter of a million eviction notices went out. To 46,000 plus, so that's a quarter of a million people. Approximately 11,000 were did in the Bronx alone in 2012 and also in 2013. And the reason is why? Wages. Wages in the city, especially in the Bronx, is very, very low. People are losing their jobs. They're either losing their unemployment, okay? And losing their pensions. There's a lot of people that invested money that have lost their pensions, so they have no income. People are paying between 50% and more of their income for rent. But yet still, landlords are willing to house homeless people out of shelters for $3,000 to $4,000 a month. That's a lot of money. Last year, we got a new landlord. Three years ago, the wall was fixed, no heat, okay? But I would like to read you something from AARP. 2009, the city announced age-friendly for the senior citizens. It is not for affordable homes, but yet still, as of last year, city voters, 50 and older down, that more than half of the boomers said that they're gonna leave the city when they retire. If they do so, between $12 to $21 billion annually will be lost from the city. Is that what we want?
No.
We want to stay here in our homes, especially the ones that was born here. I have nowhere to go. This is my home. I'm paying over 50% for my rent.
Who's house?
Okay.
My house. Who's house?
My house.
Who's house?
Our house.
Jacqueline Allen.
I thank you all six for staying. I don't know what the problem is with them. I think it's very rude that they have left, and it shows that they're not here.
You're the bomb. Face is set it off. I'm saying we gotta swallow it. That's the one for why we have attitude. They're the bomb. They're there, that's why.
Hi, my name is Lucille Arroyo, and I live in 1175 Gerard Avenue. And I am speaking in behalf of GASSA and all the other people who have already spoken. Because the landlords is taking advantage of us. Being the fact that they all, all they want to have is increase. But when we have problems and we have violations in the apartments, or in the building, or the household, and we complain about it, they always say, they don't have enough time, or they don't bring the certain amount of people who are able to, you know, fix the apartment, those violations you have. Many of them always wants to increase the rent, increase the rent every year or every two years. But they do not give enough heat. When we complain about heat, they don't, we don't have enough heat. We don't have enough people who could come and fix the situation. Like my bathroom has mold, and the lights, you know, electricity, you know. When you plug in something, sometimes, you know, like a little bit of flame or fire comes out of the apartment. And you, you complain about that, but they don't do anything about it. They don't come and fix it. And plus, if they bring somebody, they bring someone that's amateur, that doesn't have the license, or know about electricity, or know how to fix apartments, that they work with it, but they make it worse. And sometimes, all they do is plastic around, but they plastic it a couple of months, the same problem comes again. Where is all this money going to? Every time they increase our rent for any other reasons, where is all this money going to? If they don't, you know, do what they have to do to help us have a better living, you know? You know? And as far as I can say, they live well, they have their own, you know, mansion, and they have all the money they have, and they have a new building. They live well, but they don't care of us. The majority of us who are really hustling and really doing what we can to maintain the ability to live where we live in the apartments we live in, to pay the increase.
Rent freeze.
So we want a rent freeze. We want a rent freeze.
Jacqueline Allen, Alena Hadrina Alejo. Or Anna Cosme? Oh, I'm collecting people so we can have people on deck. Not because I'm trying to skip over you.
I want to thank you for being here today, listening to myself and my community.
Can you just make sure I know, we know who you are speaking to?
Alena Hadrina Alejo. My name is immigrant, I'm from the American public. I came to this country in 1992. I became a special language teacher. I have a bachelor's degree and two master's degrees. Currently, I'm living with my mom. My mom is retired, but she cannot pay rent on her own, so I have to live with her. And I'm separated among three children, too. My son is 14 years old, and now he's a teenager. He's asking mommy, "When am I going to have my mom bedroom?" And that really breaks my heart, because I want my children to grow in a health environment, and I want them to have the opportunity to have children be certain. I do get paid well, I would say, compared to other people, however, I pay a lot of taxes. Here in New York, it's a very high paying taxi. So we deserve to be treated like, you know, the way we, we worked so hard to do the best to our community. I work with special education children. I have to face the fact that some of my students live in shelters, and I don't think that, you know, they don't deserve that. They need all the support that they could get. I have a child that is a service that, he's on a wheelchair. He has a very deteriorating condition. He's not gonna live for too long. And this child, the mother has to carry the child to the third floor because they haven't been able to find a first floor, so they go out on the wheelchair. So it's very hard for this family and for him to make it to school to get the services that he needs. And as a teacher, I have vision for my students, for my children that I serve, because I know they have a lot of disabilities. And, you know, I want a brighter future. I want them to live healthy. I want them to enjoy their family. I want them to live a happy life, because I know a lot of them won't make it to college. However, if they get all what they need, all the support I have, so you can get them, I know they'll be happy. You know, especially freezing the rent is gonna help so many of us.
Rent freeze.
And we love New York, we love the Bronx, and we want to stay here.
I'm Dr. Rola Montesca.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I love you.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank the board members for staying this long, and also, I want to, I want us to give a shout out to a national member. And we give a shout out to a national member here. My name is Dr. Bolavatashaw. I come here tonight to represent some people of foreign, which I'm privileged to be the chairperson. The reason why I'm here tonight is very simple. We need a rent freeze. In our community, the average household income is about $25,000 annually. And most people in my community spend well over 50% of their salary monthly to pay the rent. This is unacceptable. And the reason why this is very dangerous for us, unfortunately, when you look at health disparity in our community and rent, not, not too many people look at the comparison. But the health disparity is as a result of rent. We want to have a roof over our head, then you compromise paying your bills, you compromise. When you don't pay your bills, you have bad credit.
Yeah.
You can't trade, you can't do business, you can't get anything done. When you don't, when your rent is so high, you don't take care of your health. It's very difficult to buy fresh food.
Yes.
Then what happens? Now you use the hospitals as a revolving door. I have seen this, I'm privileged to be in a position that I can see both sides of the coin. Meaning that now I'm immigrant, I have the privilege of giving an opportunity in this country, and I now call the Bronx my home. Please, rent freeze.
Rent freeze.
Rent freeze. What do we want?
Rent freeze.
What do we want?
Rent freeze.
Thank you so much.
My name is Xavier Rodriguez, I'm the district manager of Community Board 5. And I'm here to support GASSA, all the Bronx tenants, and also from Manhattan. We're a bedroom community. We have over 50 buildings, and probably could even be more, that are currently in the housing preservation department's proactive initiative. It's because property owners who refuse to do the right thing, the city has to bring them in to offer programs for them to fix up their buildings. One of the major culprits in our community, and what they're doing is warehousing apartments to make sure they can get the incentive programs of $3,000 a month from the shelters. I don't blame the families who have to move in there, but I do blame the property owners who should be doing a better job.
Yes.
They're making money. I've got buildings along the Grand Campus that have the commercial properties. Those properties are paying upwards of $7,500 a month to $15,000 a month. And they're still not doing anything with their properties. I've been involved in community services for a very long time. I started as a housing organizer in 1967 at the age of 18. I am now almost a month away from being 66 years old, and nothing has changed. The South Bronx burned out, the West Side with the blackout, real estate boom, financial crisis, income inequality. Please, board, do something for the people who just can't make ends meet with their rent.
Rent freeze.
Have rent freeze.
Amanda Bonner. Benjamin Warren.
Good night. I actually didn't know about this. I was just coming home from work, and I saw, his name is Pablo. Anyway, I'd like to tell you, the reason I'm speaking like this is not because I'm sick. No, you're not sick. It's because I'm tired, and I felt I'm not doing my fiber, because I was fighting for so long and for so hard. I used to live in a building that, thank God, I no longer live in, but the residents are still there. I feel for them. I'm afraid to get this biopsy. I'm afraid to get this biopsy. I fought so long and so hard. Nearly 10 years I lived in that building. My kids suffered. What I was trying to do is go to school to better myself, so that I don't have to depend on housing that goes according to your income. What the landlords would do, when we tried to organize, when we saw that the building wasn't being run properly, they would use court as retribution. The average folk can't afford a lawyer, like our landlords can, to navigate the system. So they use this as retribution. They know what they're doing. It's retaliation. It hurt my family. I got laid off four, five years ago. My mom came to live with me. My mom got laid off also. We all lived together. It was the only way we could survive. We couldn't afford housing if we lived separately. The way we were taunted and the things that happened to us at Hadley's. And I'm speaking directly to you guys, and I'm hoping that you guys are understanding that this is about more than simply us not wanting to get the landlords, or for them not to, to get their rent increase. It is affecting our health, it is affecting you. You know why? You don't exist in boroughs. We all affect one another. When others do wrong things, and we sit back and let it happen, you are implicit, and you must do the right thing. It needs to be more empowering.
Rent freeze.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Warren. I'm a resident at 1511 Sherwood Avenue. I've been here for approximately 35, approximately 36 years. I'm a tenant advocate, as I always told you, I put the title of the building. We experience other things, other than the fact that most of you are claiming the problem with your conditions, housing conditions. Our problem in that building was suffered with colonial management. They came in the building, back in 1999, under different names. Over the years, they changed it, from one to another, but finally ended up the name colonial management. During that time, they came up with a trick of charging tenants double the amount that the rent stabilization board ever considered charging. If a tenant slept in the building, paying $555, a new tenant would come in, their rent would be $1,200.
$1,200.
Yet, this was their city. They had rent because the people didn't know the difference. Now, we, as a tenant, sat down a couple of weeks ago with our tenants. We had went over all of the tenants' rent that came in after 2007. We found that each tenant that came in that building in 2007 paid approximately $3, $4, $500 over the previous tenant's rent that left the building. So now, we asked the tenants here, "Why are you paying this rent? You shouldn't." So now, we asked the board here to freeze the rent. We don't want to see a rent increase. We want to see a rent froze. We want to see you freeze the rent for all tenants, not just for my room, for every tenant that's stable in the rent district of this New York City. You know, all tenants paying rent above and beyond what they should be paying. Tenants paying $500, $600 a month more than what they should. They shouldn't. So why should you raise rent for landlords? Give them more money than what you don't need? We are paying for them to have a little bit of life with other, that's all. And we can't afford it, because we pay for their living, we suffer. Pay dollars.
Rent freeze.
Rent freeze.
Rent freeze.
Our final two speakers.
Me.
Suzanne Langley and Esther Agoldi.
Can I speak too?
Can I hear, can I speak? I'm here.
Anyone who hasn't spoken?
This one by here. You could speak. Yeah, we want, we want to hear you.
Ah, hello. I wasn't planned, I've been here since 4:00, completely this building. I came here.
What is your name?
My name is Alba McNabb. I came here to register for, you know, take here some visits to be entered into the school. So I saw, I went outside signing the petition, and I backtracked and came and sat in the, all this people that was talking about all this complaint, which this was a tree there, and I know, because right now, I don't have an apartment to complain about with opponents, okay? But just the fact, it's hard for me to even find an apartment because the rent is so high. So, board, if you don't freeze the rent, it's gonna be harder for me. You know, I'm staying here and there, and I'm not, I've been, my mother died, and my name wasn't on the lease, so I was... so I was a primary caregiver, so I've been a convict since July. So, it just, when the landlord get an increase, the quality of the tenants who live in there, quality doesn't increase. They don't get, they don't get no incentive when the landlord get an increase. They don't put no candles in the hall, you know, they don't do nothing. So I think y'all should, um, not, I think y'all should just freeze it.
Freeze it.
When we leave here, what are y'all's position? What y'all gonna do?
Well, we're gonna try and do the right thing.
No, I mean, what is, no, we have need to understand this process.
We have three more public hearings, and then there's a final vote on June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-third, the final, so we have, oh, I have to listen to y'all for this. Okay. And then y'all bring it to who? Or just y'all, just y'all? I don't have no problem because y'all want to freeze it. I know you just, like, you seen I can do this, boy. Will I fuck you stupid on that time? Yeah, he's up now. But I appreciate y'all for my staying here. And I know y'all gonna do the right thing, because it's a child. And you don't talk to him, I'm sorry, I got, I got to go. Okay. What somebody had said earlier, a while back, y'all really need to open up these landlords' books?
The only thing we have is to make one decision.
Rent freeze.
One point.
Rent freeze. Rent freeze. Rent freeze. Rent freeze.
Public Health and Preservation Development.
Good evening, my name is Terri Ham. Sorry, I'm late. And I want to thank, my name is Terri Ham. I also want to thank you guys for coming out to listen to our, our quiet and our pain and our sorrow. We have just became a part of what I call nightmare. We have nightmare on Ellis Street, nightmare on all our streets. We are suffering and pain, we are tired. Like the word says, I would be moved by myself. I had got used to it at nineteen eighty-five, about a month ago. I had been fighting my landlord, who's been allowed to let her property manager corrupt and come into our homes and be big people. We had mold, my children were at school taking tests. Can I do tests because her eyes are funny and she's feeling, her tongue feeling funny? Not knowing where it could be coming from. Come to fight on that, it was mold. Right, I had a fighting department, four bedroom apartment, basically complaining about the heaters. And the day that we had a fire, we had a party coming up, we had a gathering, just had my landlord coming over. But suddenly, God always works towards, to his rights. My landlord, they came like two minutes later. They really came early enough, they said they were coming, they were gonna fight, which was more of a thing. My landlord, my manager landlord was allowed to tell the firemen that I never complained about the heater being defective. My family and my stuff, I shouldn't be here talking right now. If I were to bring more time in that hallway when that fire, the black stuff is out, I would not have, just bring it. Constantly with my children on the door night, flooding, Xboxes, toys, furniture, continually, through the years. I am so sick of fighting people. I'm a good person. My family, we are good people, we are assets to the community. And a lot of people here that I know also, we want the best, we deserve a part of life. I'm just asking the people, what do we do? I had my landlord come, my, 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 I'm hurting right now, so I'm going to visit a person that I don't want to visit. I had my last name, my SSI. They took that four hundred dollars from me. I went to my manager and told him, so what do you want me to do? You're gonna spend on so-and-so my money. I said to my landlord, just camp, boy, your camp will always stay in there, because I want to go back to nineteen eighty-five and help those vulnerable people. And people are getting hurt and intimidated and being victims out here. Like, about thirty, twenty people left before I left. She says, I don't care, let it do about it. How you turn, I tell you, I'm a pissy income. And your reply is, I don't care, do what you can do about it? Okay, now I thought, I have proof here, my SSI, money's sticking to me. It was, it was an error. And then she continued to use, I call this the microscope, the pen. Go to the office, go to the courts, and make a complaint. She had me running back and forth when I shouldn't have been here, saying I didn't pay rent. I fight with her, I paid rent. Come back next, she met tomorrow, oh, you been putting in rent. Which I knew about, but what could you, I had to pay the rent, I'm gonna pay the rent, and still pay the rent that's due the next month. This been going on continually. She's allowed to do whatever she wants to do, it should not be that way. It should not be rent freeze, it should not be rent. She gotta stop that, ladies are hurting us like that. I lost her, you're not gonna break that, I'm gonna break it down. But when I go down, I'm gonna talk to you. When I talk to you. Who do I talk to? Who do we talk to?
I think it, for individual problem, that's all we can recommend, because again...
This is not the great, this is not individual. This is not individual. This is everybody, everything. Thank you for listening, everybody, God bless.
Hey, all, Suzanna? When I say Casa?
You said Casa.
Casa.
Casa. Casa. Casa.
So last year, the board told us that they couldn't have outdoor hearings because people wouldn't show up. Tonight, there's three hundred and seventy, three hundred and fifty-seven seats in here, and we filled them all. Only one left, okay? So I hope that, I hope that in the, I hope that the mandate E-Wall, right? That everybody came out, that folks sacrificed work, their kids, their jobs, to be here tonight, to fill the room to capacity, to wait for over an hour outside as the police would only let us in ten at a time. That the need is real. I think what you heard tonight is that this is real. And that increases of one percent, two percent, people are already choosing between gravy, between milk, between cereal. One percent and two percent puts people over the edge. One percent and two percent makes housing unaffordable to people in shelters who are trying to find homes. So I hope this serves as a mandate E-Wall, that the time is now for rent freeze. And I just want to say one more, two more things. Quickly, is that we did a lot of outreach for Casa, we made a thousand phone calls. We put out, we were on the streets, on the corners, we were in front of housing court. I think it's outrageous that the board itself doesn't do outreach. That the board itself doesn't put up public notices to let the public know there are two and a half million unstableized tenants in this city. And we would have had a lot more tenants tested by around the city if the board itself, if the city, if the administration would test, would let tenants know about these hearings. The second thing I want to say is that announcement does that the poverty is not natural, it's man-made. Right? And people talk a lot about not struggling and not being able to pay the rent, and there's a lot of reasons for that, but the board is part of that. Right? For forty-four years, constant increases have made people poor. We need zero.
Thank everyone for your patience, for your passion, for your testimony, for sharing your stories, and...
Thank you, good night.